Fourteenth, twenty twenty, Twalton City Council meeting. This is our last city council meeting of the year. I appreciate you all taking some time out during the holidays to join us in this meeting. Uh, first thing we have on, on the agenda tonight is a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen. Uh, at this point, we usually take about a minute or so, uh, to remember those folks who have passed since our last meeting. As many of you are aware, COVID nineteen is still, uh, rampaging i- if you will, through our community. We are losing record numbers of folks, both to infection and to death. So, uh, take a moment to think about those families impacted, uh, by a loss of their, someone in their family during this holiday season, please. All right, uh, just as a reminder, please wear your mask, wash your hands often, stay physically distant. Um, the vaccines will be getting here soon. The first initial deliveries have arrived in Oregon, uh, and those doses are going to go to our healthcare workers. Uh, residents have been asking me, when do I, when do we envision shots and vaccines getting to the general public? Uh, if you're not, uh, the goal is by the governor, have ten thousand folks immunized a day. Uh, so ideally, uh, most of the people in our community will have at least one of their shots done, uh, the two-shot regimen. If that's a vaccine you get, uh, by mid-year, uh, people are like shocked that it's going to take that long, but it takes some time to get, you know, multi-millions, what, three million doses out to the residents of the state of Oregon. So moving on, uh, another sad item on our agenda tonight is, uh, the recognition of our outgoing counselors. Um, we've worked with these gentlemen over the last few years. Um, they've been a big part of our council, a big part of our community. That's sad to see them go, so I'm going to hand this over to Sherilyn to lead the recognition and recognition of our outgoing calendars, calendars, counselors, sorry.
Um, yeah, well, let, um, do we want to just do them, you and I didn't practice this, so we want to do it, uh, one at a time? Why don't we do it one at a time? You'll get to move on, Counselor Kellogg.
That's it, one at a time.
All right, um, why don't we start with position two then, um, which is, I believe, Counselor Morrison's, right?
All right.
Yeah, um, and so there are a couple of things. I delivered a gift bag to Counselor Morrison's house and so, um, the, uh, one of the, there's a wrapped, um, plaque in there. If you could unwrap the plaque and hold that up.
You gotta do your Van and white, Paul.
Mm-hmm, oh, your background makes it hard to see.
You have to put it in front of your chest so we can see it. There we go.
There you go. So I believe it says, well, maybe you have to read it to us, I'm sorry.
Yeah, too much light, okay. It just says, uh, uh, "In appreciation for your dedication and service to the city of Twalton, Paul Morrison, City Council, January twenty seventeen, December twenty twenty." So, uh, it's a very nice little plaque, uh, uh, suitable for framing, quite nice, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your service and, uh, the second thing that we have is we have picked out, well, you picked out a piece of art, uh, that we framed. And, um, after much back and forth, um, we settled on a, a picture that you liked that included traffic. And you may want to explain the piece, but if you could hold that up and, and show all of us, that'd be awesome.
Oh, this definitely isn't going to work. All right, uh, this actually, um, it, it's, it's the photo from, uh, the last council meeting presentation that Jonathan, uh, gave of an aerial view of I-5 interchange overlooking, um, both Cabela's and the, um, mall and the, where the Best Buy and Panera's is and, uh, the little, uh, water, um, whatever it's called, next to the hospital, a little, um,
Wetland.
Wetland, thank you, I knew there was something, there was a better word for it than what I was coming up with yet. Um, and, uh, no, I just, it's a really nice photo, um, and I think it just kind of, um, it's also got a picture of Mount Hood in the background, which is another reason why I liked it, because, um, as you walk through the neighborhoods and you go up the hills, uh, next to my house, you can, you can see Mount Hood. It's, it's, you know, quite an, an icon for the city, so it was very nice, thank you very much.
And then the final thing that we have, um, is the framed proclamation, which I believe the mayor's going to read. Um, and if I could just take a, the chance to say on behalf of the staff that have worked with you for the last four years and with you and the CIO, um, before that, um, we've appreciated working with you. Your passion and energy are boundless and, um, you've always been a strong proponent of transportation and community engagement. And, um, I thank you for your, your willingness to just jump in and be involved. And I will miss our Friday calls and, um, I wish you all the best.
Well, I'd also like to thank you, Paul, for your service over the last four years. What distinguished you in my mind was your commitment to parks, the playing fields, and to representing us on the Clackamas County, uh, Corning Committee, also on the C-four. Um, you were very involved in those and you also came to Washington County Corning Committee. So you, you kept your thumbs, uh, on everything, had an idea what's going on in all different pots, and you were never shy to, uh, you know, voice your opinion, and I appreciate that with you. And then, um, you know, we've, we've had our, you know, every one of us have our different, you know, disagreements with each other. But what I appreciate about Paul is that he doesn't hold grudges, uh, you, you might disagree and, you know, you win some, you lose some. But when, you know, he's always a pro and he's bringing, and he moves on. And that's what I very much appreciate about him. So with that, I'm going to open the floor to others after I read the proclamation. So a proclamation thanking Counselor Paul Morrison for his leadership, dedication and commitment to the city of Twalton. Whereas Paul Morrison was elected to the city council on November two thousand sixteen, is sworn into office on January two thousand seventeen. And whereas, prior to being elected, Paul served as the land use officer of the IBAC Community Involvement Organization, working to understand current and long-range planning projects and transferring that information back to the CIO to heighten the CIO's advocacy efforts. And whereas, during his four years on council, Paul passionately and energetically participated in important policy initiatives, including the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Twalton twenty forty efforts, budget considerations, police staffing, pedestrian safety enhancements, and much more. His input and insights were instrumental in advancing the Twalton Moving Forward Bond Program, which is measurably improving transportation in Twalton. And whereas Paul has ably represented Twalton on regional policy groups, including the Clackamas County Business Alliance, the Clackamas County Corning Committee, and the Metro Subcommittee, elevating Twalton's voice on important issues such as Twalton Shuttle and the Brolin Road Transfer. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that the city of Twalton extends its thanks to Counselor Paul Morrison for his leadership, dedication and commitment to the city of Twalton from January two thousand seventeen, December twenty twenty, introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty. Thank you very much, Paul, for all your efforts in the city. I know you're not going anywhere and we're going to see you again. So I'd open the floor to others.
I'll be happy to start. Uh, so Paul and I came in at the same time together, even kind of came from the same place. Uh, he showed the same diligence and, um, you know, vast knowledge base of the IBAC CIO as he did on the council. Uh, I was always very appreciative, uh, of his novel approach to things, which were always well-informed, uh, and well-intentioned. Um, I really honestly can't believe that we're not going to have our guy in Clackamas County anymore, uh, and in the other communities that, uh, you're so involved in, you know, and, and I think that's helped all of us better understand some of the perspectives of our constituents, whether it's, uh, the school district folks, um, or, you know, a- any kind of, uh, other constituency that, that you've interacted with so well and so deeply. So, uh, I personally, uh, very much admire the work that you've done and thank you for your service.
All right, so, raise his hand up.
Well, I wasn't sure if you guys, if Nancy wanted to go before me.
We'll serve Nancy last, you know, she's council president, so she gets to go last.
Okay, okay, I just want to, I don't want to jump in line. I just want to thank you very much as well, Paul, for working so well together. And, um, I too see you, uh, so engaged, thorough with your research, presenting your arguments in a, in a respectful and, um, well-thought-out way that really serves our community and helps with my decision-making. Um, I also, you know, I've seen you at outside community, um, meetings with our representative and other places. You're always in the community, um, and passionately, like many people have said, showing up. And I will say, um, we agree actually on a lot, when I think about all of the unanimous votes, just like we just had, there's many times when our council agrees, oftentimes when our council agrees unanimously in a lot of things. But even where we've had our differences, you've always been respectful and disciplined in your arguments. And I know I'm going to miss that and I really appreciate, um, when you bring a different perspective to the table and have me thinking about and considering, um, more people in, in our community and, and that's really important to me. Thank you so much and thank you for your passion and your enthusiasm for Twalton. And I know we're going to see you around all the time, so I know you're not going anywhere. But it would be weird not to be working with you and I, I will miss you. Thank you for your service.
Others, Maria and then Valerie.
Hey, Paul, um, I'm really going to miss you. I think that, like Counselor Brooks said, you do bring your argument and you, you fight to the very end and you present it and you have your facts and, you know, um, and sometimes we don't, sometimes we have agreed on saying the same topics and, and, uh, voted the same way, but the other times that we're like, no, you, you see it this way, I see it that way. But I respect you a lot, I really, uh, will miss you and, um, I was, um, happy to serve with you in the last two years. And I hope that in, you know, that we still see you, see you around. And, uh, thank you for having a lot of, uh, background on what's going on as some of these ordinance or things are happening that I was a bit confused or didn't know the background of behind what happened before. And, uh, you were very good at bringing that up as well, so thank you very much for all that, I will miss you. And Robert, I will miss you too. Um, it's, uh, been, it's been a pleasure knowing you and hearing your expertise. You've been, um, you were my neighbor, so I will miss you a lot. And it kind of like, hey, what's going on here? Hey, so I, um, we don't get to do that anymore, but when, uh, we were a person, you were very helpful in under, in helping me understand the process. Um, and sometimes I didn't understand some of the things that were happening and you were very gracious and, um, to let me know what was happening. So thank you very much for all that, I will miss you and hope to see you around as well, so. Thank you for your service.
Valerie.
Um, yeah, Paul, um, I, I first met you on the, um, master, Parks Master Plan Committee and it was a pleasure just to have somebody that had spent so much time and effort really, um, understanding the master plan and what was going on to help, um, keep it together, move it forward. And the same with on city council, you always, um, really did your background work and, um, made cogent arguments. And also, um, it's rare that I go to a meeting to find things out and you're not in it. So, um, it's just amazing how much time and effort you have put into, um, you know, public outreach and, um, attending in this COVID world, all these meetings to find out what's going on in our community locally and all the way up to federally, just to, um, have that knowledge base to bring to council and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you, um, it's been a pleasure to work with you, Paul. Um, you've just been a tireless advocate for our park system, for our schools and our children. Um, you took the C-four, uh, position and you really resurrected that and gave a very strong vocal, um, voice to Twalton on that committee and brought valuable information back to us and really, you know, opened our eyes and ears for Clackamas County, what's going on there. Um, you've always had, um, strength in your conviction and you've stood by things that you believed in. And we've all been on the end of the, you know, five to two vote, but, you know, you, like I said, you have the power of your convictions and I admire that. Um, I think we all know how difficult it can be to try to balance, um, public volunteer work, uh, with family and you being such an active, involved father and husband. I'm sure it's taken innumerable hours from your family and from the volunteerism that you do with the school board and the sports teams, but it's been greatly appreciated and thank you for everything that you've done, all the hours that you've committed. And, um, you know, the great advocate that you've been for our city and for our kids and for our schools. And we'll miss having you on council with us, but I know you're still going to be very active in the community and I hope that you'll be sitting on some boards and planning committees for us. And, um, I look forward to working with you the next couple of years in that capacity. And I just thank you very much for all that you've done for us.
All right, now it's your turn, Paul, the floor is yours.
Well, first off, thank you, everybody. Um, you know, I, 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 I listened to, to some of you, you say, well, we had our disagreements. Well, I have a disagreement with everybody, um, on something. Um, I always like to say, and you've all heard this from me before, um, we all want, we're all trying to get to the same destination. It would just, we were arguing about what road we're going to take. And I firmly believe that and I find, I find strength in working with every one of you because every one of you is a champion for things that I care passionately about. And, and Counselor Pratt, whether it's the parks, and, um, Counsel President Grimes, it was clearly, you know, the marijuana issue. Uh, Counselor Brooks, it was, it was bees, um, which was awesome. Uh, Counselor Kellogg, uh, you know, the, the love of, of your life is that garden corner curves and, and I was happy to partner with you and to get involved in that and, and to, to be a, a very pro voice on that. Um, and, and Counselor Reyes, you know, we've had a couple of, of issues with, uh, in particularly, and I, I got to tell you, and I just said this to somebody, that we're extremely fortunate to finally have somebody, um, uh, that, uh, represents a part of the community that is really underserved and, and you've done an amazing job of being that voice for them and, and of, I still remember, Frank, I'm sure you remember this, getting a, a lecture from Counselor Reyes on, uh, Latino, Latinx, um, back for, uh, two years ago. And, and that was awesome, uh, Counselor Reyes, I really, uh, appreciate that kind of, um, uh, experience that you bring to council. Um, so in my, when I ran for council, I was encouraged to run because we were really upset over Bassalt Creek at the time. I was really upset because we wanted a crosswalk over in front of Dogwood because of all the people who crossed there to go through the, um, the area behind Victor, between Victoria Woods and Victoria Gardens. And we couldn't make any traction, we even had a meeting with Washington County and was told, yeah, can't have it. Um, I was really frustrated and had long conversations with, uh, then Counselor Davis about a crosswalk in front of the high school because that was another huge concern. Um, and we got all that done. The only thing and the, and one main reason my passion to come back, um, is parks. We, we still don't have that field complex that I cared, I think the, the youth need. Um, I think we have another champion coming on board, um, next year, which, so the, the voice will still be, be carried. And I will be around and whispering in everybody's ear that, um, uh, how supportive it is. But I think, uh, Counsel President Grimes hit it right on the nose. With, with three kids in high school, it was just too challenging, these, uh, last, ever since, we all remember, we were just talking about the other day. Um, um, March, Wednesday, before spring break and the world shut down as far as my high school students were concerned. Um, and it's been a battle and a, and, and, uh, it's been a battle ever since. And it is extremely taxing on two high school seniors. Um, and I have one who was involved in choir, that's a no-no. I have one that was in, involved in track and field across country. Amazingly somehow that's a contact sport, they can't run right now, I'm not, I won't get involved in politics of that, it's not the moment for it. Um, and I have one involved in baseball and then we travel all over, um, and for the, for my runner, we have to go to other areas, uh, where they are running so that he can participate. Um, for my baseball player, we've been all over the Northwest in the last ten months. And so it has been very time, trying, but I intend to be involved and I hope to be involved. And I love this city, um, what we've done, well, and I just want to say this again, I said this when I first ran. One of the reasons I was asked by then, uh, the reporter for the, uh, for Pamplin, uh, Ralph Miller had said, you know, why do you want to run? And I said, because I love working with this staff and I still to this day will say that. This, this staff is, it's, it's so much fun to work with because they don't say no, they say, well, that's an interesting idea. Um, let's look into it. And I, I, you know, Frank, you laugh, but you know how important that is. I, to have someone say no and then just walk away from you is the most frustrating thing in the world. And but to have someone say, let me listen to you. And I've tried to do that in my own personal life, is when someone asks me, hey, I want you to vote on this. And I'm like, I'll, I'll look at it, I'll take a look at it and, uh, and I, I try to listen. And that's what I love about this staff and the great leadership under, uh, under Sherilyn. And with that, I'm, I'm going to stop talking because, um, there's another great counselor that we all get to, um, say the great, amazing things and thank you all for the nice things you've said.
Thanks, Paul. Sherilyn.
Well, back to me, now on to position four. So, uh, that's Counselor Robert Kellogg and I also delivered a, um, I, no fair, we cannot move on. Um, I also delivered a package to your doorstep and that included a few things. So, um, it included a plaque, so if you want to hold that up, yes, very nice. It says, "In appreciation for your dedication," and you'll have to read the rest of it.
Uh, just for brevity, it says the same thing that Paul's plaque said, except aptly, my name is on this one, so, thank you.
We do appreciate your service. Um, and then, uh, like Counselor Morrison, uh, you, says my internet connection is unstable, um, yes, you have a, a picture, so we went back and forth and, um, you decided to, uh, go with the garden corner curves architectural drawing or, um, a piece of that. And so we had it framed and I, I trust that when you look at it, you'll remember all the wonderful work that you did in support of getting the garden corner curves design funded. And then, of course, the Twalton Moving Forward, which was able to, um, fund that, fund that, the construction of that.
Couldn't have done it without you.
And then, of course, um, we have a, the framed proclamation, which the mayor will read. Um, but, um, I'd just like to take this opportunity, yes, there it is. I'd just like to take this opportunity on behalf of the city staff to say, um, what a pleasure it's been to work with you these last four years. And, um, the year or two before that, when you were, um, IBAC CIO president, um, your passion is, um, unbounded and you are so strategic and, and you scare me a little bit sometimes when I, um, it's like I, I, I just know I'm not staying up with you all the time and like, uh, running to, to keep up with you, to see where you're going and, um, but always appreciate your, um, thoughtfulness and your passion associated with so many things. And, um, I'm going to miss you on council, um, I, like, um, Counselor Reyes, I was, uh, a neighbor when we were sitting in the council meeting and, um, sometimes it was a bit distracting. He would pass me a note and I would try to like, I'm not a very good multitasker and I'm like, ah, like, ah, what does he want? And, uh, I'm like, but it would always, it's always interesting to kind of sit next to you and, um, and, uh, keep up with your thought process, so. Uh, you'll be missed, but I know you're not going anywhere and you'll be around and so, um, thank you for all of your service and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Go first again, Yang, you know, again, with, uh, being just being mayor. Um, Robert and I have worked, uh, on a lot of projects together over these last few years. Uh, a particular notice I want to really commend Robert is on, is all the hours and time and field trips spent on the Southwest Quarter Project. And I mean, that was years of meetings, years of formal meetings, informal meetings, field trips, um, and lobbying and talking to people in the background and trying to figure out how to make the Southwest Quarter work for Twalton, work for Bridgeport, getting the station out here. He was a tireless advocate for it, um, so I just want to thank him for all the work he did on that. Also want to thank him for helping myself and Joelle Davis, uh, back when we first got on council, getting our first council rules together. Uh, we sat in his attorney's office and that goes out along with, uh, Sean Brady over multiple sessions. And we have, I, what I feel is a very good set of council rules for us to abide by. And I also appreciate Robert's demand of time, just like, uh, Paul. Robert puts a lot of time into being a city counselor, uh, on things that people don't even realize. Uh, the amount of meetings you have to attend, uh, phone calls, emails that aren't reflected on a city council agenda. Uh, he always took calls, he'll reply to emails, sometimes he cracked me up, uh, in the Lou Ogden School of Responding to Emails at ODOC thirty. Because this guy doesn't sleep, I'm, I'm assuming, because based on some emails I've gotten in the past. But I also appreciate him being a, a very good sounding board and being a legal beagle that there'll be things I'd be questioning and then it'd be interesting to watch him and Sean go back and forth about some legal points. Uh, so I'm very much going to miss you, Robert. Uh, again, just like Paul, I know you're not going anywhere and just like Paul, you're, um, a victim, if you will, of COVID, uh, that you have to put your children first. And that's, you know, no one can argue with that and, but we're going to miss you on city council. So let me go ahead and read your proclamation. A proclamation thanking Counselor Robert Kellogg for his leadership, dedication and commitment to the city of Twalton. Whereas Robert Kellogg was elected to the Twalton City Council in November two thousand sixteen, is, was sworn into office in January two thousand seventeen. And whereas, prior to being elected, Robert served as president of the IBAC Community Involvement Organization, enhancing communication and involvement within the CIO and advocating, advocating for visible improvements such as sidewalks on Graham's Ferry Road and funding the design of the Garden Corner Curves Project. And whereas Robert's keen understanding of process and strategic thinking has resulted in meaningful dialogue amongst the council and staff, a- as well as the advancement of many important policy initiatives, including the city's investment in the Employment Incentive Fund and adoption of the city's first ever council rules document. Robert has been a champion for local transportation projects, contributing to the original idea for a designated funding source, which openly led to the successful twenty million dollar Twalton Moving Forward Bond Program. And whereas Robert has spent innumerable hours representing Twalton on important local and regional policy groups, including the Southwest Quarter Steering Committee and the Core Area Parking Board. Therefore be proclaimed by the city of Twalton that, the city council of the city of Twalton, that the city of Twalton extends its thanks to Counselor Robert Kellogg for his leadership, dedication and commitment to the city of Twalton from January two thousand seventeen through December twenty twenty, introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty. I just want to go back for a moment and go back to the advocating for visible improvements such as sidewalks on Graham's Ferry Road. I don't know if you folks remember the photos that Robert sent of his children lying on the sidewalk on Graham's Ferry Road? Because they had tripped and fell and those were sent, I think even Commissioner Roy Rogers saw those pictures. So,
Fantastic.
That was the act, kind of advocate he was for getting things done in Twalton. So other folks, floor is open. Paul.
Yeah, I'll go first too, um, if you don't mind. First, uh, Robert, absolute, uh, pleasure to work with you on council. Um, and we've had some great victories together, um, and done some great work. Um, uh, as the, the new council is going to find out when they go to the advance. work. As the new council is going to find out when they go to the advance, the leader of that group, Jim, at our first advance, kind of outlined and walked us all through this. And at our second advance, two years later, said, you've made more progress in two years than in the 10 years that I've been here. And I attribute a lot of that to you, Counselor Kellogg. And in part, it's what Cheryl Loma said, you are always literally three steps ahead of a lot of us in terms of the strategy, and how to go about doing that. And to that end, I will sincerely miss you, and hope you do stay involved in Stafford, because you've been a huge champion. I would liken myself to be a cheerleader on the sideline, saying, go, Robert, go, as you are that lineman getting beaten up on every single play. But you've engaged with all those groups down there, and have really done a tremendous job in giving us some momentum and moving forward down there. And that is also true of what you did with the Southwest Quarter. I was the alternate. I went to a lot of those meetings. I didn't go to all of them, but I went to a lot of them. Although I did notice that you were conveniently sick at one meeting that I had to sit up there on the dais when the mayor of Tiger dropped his little bombshell. And I thought, how convenient of Counselor Kellogg to miss this meeting. But you have been a champion for what we want down there, for what we wanted. It's unfortunate it didn't pass, and I'm hoping they come back again with some revisions. But I still remember meeting you the very first time, and perhaps you may not remember meeting me, but it was under the canopy at Garden Corner Curves. It was the very first meeting for the, this big group there. And you were leading the meeting, and I walked up to you, and I said, asked you a question, and then turned into a conversation. And you said, oh, this is only my second meeting. I just got involved here. And that inspired me. And this is why that kind of conversation is so important. That inspired me to get involved with the IBAC CIO. I just figured, hey, I just moved to town. I can't, I probably have to wait a year or two to figure out what's going on. And here I was, I was accepted immediately, and was very shortly thereafter the IBAC CIO officer, land use officer, unable to work with you. But that, that kind of willingness, and reaching out to everybody, and keeping everybody involved, in terms of keeping everybody involved. I also can't let it go without the hen controversy, chicken controversy. And you remember, that was our largest meeting in our CIO. And what I liked about you, Robert, and what is really an attribute to your, and probably it's, maybe it's to your attorney skills. But at the end of that meeting, and it was like a 50-51 vote, I don't remember which was yes or no, but it was that close. And at the end of the vote, absolutely no one knew exactly where you stood. You led the meeting, you didn't drive the meeting. And it was really, I thought, an important contribution to the community. And you've done that on all the things that you do. You take part, and you open up the dialogue, and you keep everybody involved, and you invite other people in for their discussions. And then, you know, you make, we make decisions. And you've made, I think, some really good ones in the four years. And we've worked together on a lot of really good projects, and I really appreciate it. And again, I hope you're going to stay involved, and I hope to see you around. And I hope we can find some other projects to work on. There's a couple I have in mind. Most notably, I'll get to that later. You can call me. Anyway, I wish you the very best, Robert, to you and your family.
Thanks so much, Paul.
Valerie, then Bridget.
Robert, I'm going to miss you so much. You've just, coming in as an appointed person, I was off time in my learning curve. And every time I reached out to you, you not only just answered my question, you gave me a plethora of information, so I could really get up to speed, putting all of us in contact with people out in the Stafford area, so we could really learn the background of that area. You're such a great leader. You take the steps behind the scenes, and don't have to have the accolades up front. And it's just a wonderful thing to have it worked with you. And it's kind of funny, but whenever we have disagreed, I've always kind of enjoyed it, because you're such a good, you have such a great argument. So it's always, you know, makes a person really think of their convictions when you're not agreeing, because you have very cogent arguments, and well-thought-out arguments. And I really appreciate you. And I think we're really going to miss you on council. And I hope you have, enjoy your time at home, and hope to see you around. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Bridget was next.
All right, Counselor Kellogg, I'm going to miss you, too. And I will think of just myself as well. When I first came on to council, you're very warm and welcoming. Show me the ropes. And, you know, we've had conversations inside the room, and outside the room, talking about where our shared interests lie, and our passion for our community, which is obvious when I talk with you. I, too, echo a lot of what Counselor Pratt said around, when we're not on the same side of an issue, that your arguments help me raise my level, and help me think more about my position. And I think that's really important, an important function of what a council is all about. And it's also been a pleasure to be on many of the same sides of arguments, and to hear your opinion and validate further what my position is when I seek to represent our constituents the best that I can as well. So it's been a real pleasure. I know, I think that your family's very fortunate to have you, and I'm glad that you're going to be able to spend more time with them. And I know how invested you are. I also have to say, I live close enough to the Garden Corner Curves, where now I can't really drive through there without thinking of you, even though I was on the onset of that. But I just, I appreciate your friendship, your goodwill. And I know that we'll be hearing from you if there's points that you think that we're missing, because that's just the kind of person that you are, invested. Oh, and you've also changed my life with inviting me to get more involved with the Community Police Foundation. And that's been a real pleasure, and a really nice way to connect with a lot of our community. So thank you so much. Best of luck. And I hope that you really enjoy your time with your family. It's really a gift to have family, and that you can spend time with. And I hope that you soak it up.
Thank you very much.
All right. Maria?
Yeah, apparently I go based on impulse. Sorry, I see Robert and Paul right next to each other. So I'm like, looking at Paul, and then I felt like I had to go to Robert as well. But this is what I have to say, say to you. Thank you. And you are awesome. I said what I had to say earlier. So thank you very much for your support and your service.
Thank you.
Council President Grimes.
Gosh, where do I start? I first met Counselor Kellogg when the very, very, very beginning of the Garden Curves conversation was being had. And I remember from the very first time that I spoke with you, I thought, wow, what an absolutely spot-on, sharp, 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 laser-sharp brain, and this amazing ability to be such a dedicated, articulate advocate for the projects and the things that you really believe in. And ever since then, I just, I've just sort of been in awe of you. I loved working with you. It's always been with the greatest pride that I thought of you representing our city when you worked with the Southwest Corridor, with ODOT, with Washington County, wherever you went, and however you represented us, I always felt like we had a wonderful advocate in our corner. And I was always so proud of the work that you did. And I was very proud to have you represent the city, because I always felt like you sort of raised our profile in the state, having you on our side. The way that you listen, the knowledge that you bring to the projects that we've worked on over the years, the level of preparedness has always deeply impressed me, as has your fantastic heart, that always puts the needs and the welfare of our community first. Again, it's, this year has been so difficult, and needing to step back and help your family is a wonderful thing. And it's exactly what I would expect that you would do. That would be my expectation of you. You've always been a wonderful friend to me, and I've never enjoyed more, just picking up the phone and talking through a question or an idea with you. I'm going to miss your advice, and your input, and your thoughtful nature of approaching our projects and problems. You've been an invaluable addition to the council, and I'm going to miss you very much on a work level, and also very much on a personal level. You've been a wonderful friend. And I wish you a lot of happiness, as you spend some time, well-earned time, with your family in the coming months.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Floor is yours, Robert.
All right. Well, I'll be brief, just because we don't want to be here till midnight, I'm sure. But I want to start by thanking our staff. As Paul mentioned, these aren't people who just come to work and get the job done. They excel at what they do. We are only as good as a council as the staff reports that we get and the information that comes up. And anytime there are questions, the answers are always available, if not immediately, then shortly thereafter. So a lot of that, of course, is due to the captain of the day-to-day ship, Sherilyn Lombos. Sherilyn, we already had part of this conversation on Friday. So I will be very brief, and just tell you, you are a consummate professional. One of the reasons Twolton is so well-run, and so widely respected, is the work that you do every day, in and out, to manage your staff, to manage your council, keep us focused and moving forward. So thank you very much for everything you've done, and will continue to do, I'm sure. I also, and it's not just because he's on camera, but I got to give a shout out to my legal buddy over there, Sean Brady. I'm sure we all know this, and Sean not telling you this to build up your confidence and make you go somewhere else. But we've got a city attorney who is of the highest caliber in this state. He could be working for anybody he wanted to, and he's working with us. And we have the utmost confidence in the advice that you give us, and the direction you give us. So thank you for all your hard work, and hopefully many more years serving the City of Twolton. He's not on camera, but I can't thank enough Don Hudson, who does for finance what Sean does for legal. There's never a day when I have a concern about our city's finances, where they're going, and, you know, the planning that he does and the budgeting. There's Don. Thanks for coming on, buddy. So again, hopefully you will be here for many more years to come. I'll be following on the citizen sidelines, but have every confidence that you'll continue to do the wonderful work that you've done. And also Jeff Fox, who was with us earlier, we've seen Jeff come up through the ranks. And when he got hired, we knew he was a different kind of fellow. There's Jeff. And, you know, just has so many unique perspectives. And the thing that Jeff will always say about himself, and that I appreciate the most, is he doesn't approach things as an engineer. He doesn't say, where does this square go and this go? He says, what does this feel like? What do the people want? You know, what's the community input? And because of that, the projects that we're all working on, Jeff, that you're designing and then administering, they're special. They make Twolton a very special place to live. And your responsiveness to the community is also top-notch. So for anyone that I didn't mention on staff, it's not that I don't love you, but I'm running out of time. The music's going to start to play here in a minute. And next, I want to thank my colleagues for keeping me up to date, and keeping me interested in your perspectives. There wasn't an issue that went by that one of us didn't have an opinion on. And, you know, as many of you have said, there were disagreements in principle, but it never, ever got personal. And, you know, as we've seen from other councils around the area, when things go wrong, they can go very wrong, and pollute the discussion for months or years. We have always kept a level of professionalism and respect, and I can't thank you enough for that. I couldn't have done the things I did without you. As Paul and I leave, I want Councilors Reyes, Brooks, and Pratt to know that they're now the veterans. And you've got people coming in behind you who are the rookies. So the way that you felt when you got on council, realize that's the way they're going to feel. And please, you know, reach out to them, help them, bring them along. And I know you will, because you're all very compassionate, considerate individuals. And my message to you would be, now that you're the veterans, be bold, be bold. Strikeout and things like this climate action plan and other ideas, really reach for the brass ring. You've got a wonderful mayor who I'll address here in a moment, but that's receptive to your ideas and is collaborative. And so I encourage all of you, like I said, to reach for the stars. So, and finally, Mayor Frank, can't say enough about how incredibly you have grown into this job. When I started, you know, I was your colleague on the council, and you stepped right in, and have led this city tremendously through, you know, a very difficult crisis. I am just astonished by the sacrifice that you've made in your personal and professional life to lead this city, and to do it so well in such a short time. And, you know, the respect that you get around the region does wonders for our city on a number of levels. So I want to personally thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead on a couple of issues, and as you're going to do, and have done with others on the council. Your collaborative spirit is what really makes this work. So thank you so much. Finally, in the spirit of being a bit of an iconoclast, one issue that I'd like for the public to consider going forward, that we did not conquer as a council, was the compensation for this job. And I don't want to make it political, but as there should be evidence tonight, every one of these councillors spends an inordinate amount of time working to make this city a better place for everybody to live. And it's not well-known out there, but the compensation that councillors receive includes a monthly credit on our water bill, and if we don't want to take health insurance, the princely sum of $100 a month. So I did the math on the back of a piece of paper, and I think we get about half minimum wage for payment for the year for our job. And, you know, fortunately, the city has had a string of volunteers who are excellent people, who've been willing to give up a lot of their time. And, you know, it's a wonderful cause. It's a great thing to learn and to meet new people. But I think at some point, the city and the residents have to consider compensating our city councillors for the extraordinary amount of work that they've done. So soapbox over. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for your very nice comments. All right, got to regroup here. All right. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is public comment. So public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone attending the Zoom meeting here who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates, are you aware of anybody in the pole center or waiting in the wings?
No, mayor, no one has notified me in the Zoom meeting, and no one is at the pole center.
All right. If there's a late-breaking person, give them a moment to raise their hand or something. I see none. All right. Okay, moving on to next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items are considered routine, and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed, and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the city council work session and regular meeting minutes of November 23, 2020. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5528-20, authorizing a city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and the City of Twolton relating to the towing of vehicles. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5529-20, canvassing results of the general election held in the City of Twolton, Washington, and Clough County, Oregon, on November 3, 2020. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5530-20, authorizing splash pad equipment and materials purchased through an interstate cooperative procurement. And finally, item number five, consideration of the system development charge annual reports for fiscal year 2019-20. Would anybody, any council like an item removed from the consent agenda? Looks like that's a no.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Go through the roll, then. Counselor Brooks?
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg?
Hi.
Counselor Pratt? Couldn't hear you, Valerie.
Hi.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote, oh, I'm sorry, Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote yes also. Next item up, we have two public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing is consideration of resolution number 5527-20, authorizing the city manager to execute a quick claim deed of public utility easement located at the intersection of Southwest 124th and 99W. As required by O R S 221 dot 725, the council is conducting a public hearing on resolution number 5527-20, authorizing the city manager to execute this quick claim deed of a public utility easement located at the intersection of Southwest 24th, 124th and 99W. This public hearing is being held to consider whether to relinquish the city's interest in an unused vehicle detector loop easement that is located on two properties near the intersection of Southwest 124th Avenue and 99W. The council will hear a brief presentation from city staff, followed by any persons wishing to testify in favor of the resolution, followed by any persons wishing to testify against this resolution. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the council will enter to deliberations and vote on whether to approve resolution number 5527-20. So in this hearing, we will first hear from city staff again, then we'll hear from folks who support the resolution and those who oppose the resolution. Let's start with the presentation from city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Our new community development director, Kim McMillan, will will take it from here.
Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I think first Sean Brady was going to just give a brief on what a quit claim is.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sean Brady, City Attorney. So just briefly, as the mayor mentioned, we must have a public hearing whenever the city is going to convey an interest in real property. And currently, the city has an easement, which is an interest in real property. And that easement is for, as Kim will explain, some detector loops. And so what the city is proposing to do is to quit claim those through a deed. And all a quit claim deed is, is a simple document that says if the city has an interest in this land, the city is conveying that interest back to the property owner. So that's what this authorization would do. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you, Sean. I'm going to try to share my screen. I have three slide PowerPoint, so hopefully we'll make it quick with the PowerPoint. Maybe, there we go. So this is a vicinity map, just so you have an idea of where it's at. It's just to the northeast of the intersection of Highway 99 and 124th Avenue on the north side of the highway. What we've shown here in this slide is the area that has an easement over it and it spans the two lots. This lot is being developed currently. It's in, had its land use approved and so it's under construction right now as a parking lot with a potential future tenant on it. And this is the reason we feel comfortable asking for the quit claim is because these lines here are signal loops that are already in place for ODOT signal at 124th and Highway 99, making this easement here of no value to the city or to ODOT. And that's basically what we're asking is that you authorize the resolution for the city manager to execute the quit claim of that easement.
All right, that was quick, three slides. Any, any questions for Kim on those slides or a quit claim deed? All right, so then I'll open the floor to those who want to testify in support of this resolution. I assume no one's broken into the pole center recently and joined you.
Correct, there is.
Over there. Anyone who would like to voice opposition to this resolution? All right, so we'll go ahead and now close this hearing and enter into deliberations. Any questions, motions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 5527-20.
Second. I have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number 5527-20. This is a resolution on ordinance, so we don't have to do first and second readings, correct Sean?
That is correct.
All right, all right, so I'll start the voting with Councilor Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes. Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote yes, I also, so resolution 5527-20 is approved unanimously. All right, moving on to our second public hearing. And that is consideration of ordinance number 1450-20, a planned text amendment to update the comprehensive plan housing element, incorporate the 2019 housing needs analysis and reorganize and format the comprehensive plan, file number P T A 20-0004 and ordinance number 1450-20. This is a legislative land use hearing for the city of council to consider ordinance number 145-20, which will modify the Twalton Development Code to establish a separate comprehensive plan document, delete Twalton Development Code, chapters 1 through 16, 20 and 30, add the housing element to the comprehensive plan and amend certain provisions of the Twalton Development Code. This is Plan Text Amendment Number P T A 20-0004. The criteria for granting a Plan Text Amendment are applicable statewide planning goals, the Twalton Development Code, section 33-33.070, plan amendments, and applicable goals and policies of the city of Twalton Comprehensive Plan. The hearing will be continued, conducted as follows. First, city staff will make a presentation. Next, the council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the proposal, followed by members of the public who wish to testify against the proposal, followed by anyone else who wishes to testify about the proposal. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions of city staff and any person who provided testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether to adopt ordinance number 145-20. Does any member of the council wish to abstain from participation in this hearing? I see none, all right. The city council will now begin the public hearing with a presentation from city staff. Welcome Steve.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. And I'm going to start sharing my screen. I'm here this evening to present the housing element update to the comprehensive plan. I'm joined by Tabitha Bocetti, Assistant Planner, and Erin Engman, Associate Planner. And so for tonight's presentation, we will walk through where we've been so far in the 12 and 2040 projects, the project timeline, the nature of the proposed amendments, an example of update to housing policy, an example of simplified other policy, a little bit about the application of graphics in the city's branding guidelines to the comprehensive plan. Our Planning Commission Vice Chair, Mona St. Clair, will be here to provide the Planning Commission recommendation, followed by requested council action and then question and answers. So where we've been. The housing element update is part of the broader 12 and 2040 project, which utilized previous work done in the 12 and tomorrow visioning project and the 2018 development code update as a foundation with a housing and needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis and policy prioritization emerging as ways to address the housing issues facing Twalton as well as other identified issues. Tonight, we together complete another chapter of the 12 and 2040 project by updating the city's housing policy as part of a series of steps to help increase housing options for all in response to what we heard from the community, the planning commission, other stakeholders, as well as you, the city council. I'd like to take a moment to thank you all for your support and time. And I'd also in particular like to thank councilors Kellogg and Morrison, whose support will be missed as we move into the next phase of this project. As you can see, the housing element update was kicked off after the council's acceptance of the housing needs analysis just about a year ago in 2019. Two points along the way that I'd like to highlight, the first of which is, like many things in 2020, this project was, of course, impacted by COVID. While we were not able to conduct public engagement like we would have, like we did in 2019 and would have wanted to, nonetheless, we planned public engagement and found opportunities to gain community feedback and input. We messaged our 12 and 2040 interested parties list to keep them up to date of project developments. We used available public forums, including two city council work sessions, a total of four planning commission meetings and tonight's hearing. The second point is that we are continuing the 12 and 2040 work in 2021, which will include development code updates to help encourage development of housing that is affordable to a broader range of community members, such as townhomes and duplexes, as well as a housing production strategy, which will help identify potential policy changes to support both that middle housing as well as affordable housing. And lastly, although I think that it's apparent from the packet materials, how much work Tabitha and Erin put into this project, I would nonetheless like to thank them and acknowledge their efforts. I'd also just like to quickly thank Sean and Cheryl for their advice and guidance throughout this project. With that, I'll turn it over to Tabitha Bocetti to walk through the proposed amendments.
Yes, so as part of adopting the 2019 Housing Needs Analysis, the scope of this project includes updating the comprehensive plan to reflect the strategies, actions and priorities that were identified through the 12 and 2040 project. Staff has also taken the council's direction to streamline and reorganize the comp plan. So that includes making it a separate document, more neatly organizing policies into the comp plan, standards and regulations live in the development code. We also pulled out scattered objectives and distilled them into goals and policies as well as deleted outdated and extraneous information. So on our next slide, we have an example of our housing policy as it relates to that previous work. So in this chapter, you'll see that in chapter three is the new housing element of this comprehensive plan. The language borrows fairly directly from the policy priorities in the 2040 project, straight into the comp plan, little bit of tweaking to get that language in. And on the next slide, we have an example of kind of our more policy neutral direction of reorganizing the comprehensive plan and streamlining some of the existing language. Quite a few objectives are just renumbered into policies. This is an example where we did a little bit more to bring a statement that had a lot of verbiage and really get it down to the substance. You'll also notice in these examples that the goals and policies are formatted to be clearer to the reader. This is also enhanced by formatting the documents, which Erin will talk about next.
Thanks, Tabitha. So we started with somewhat of a code-centric, dense, heavy document. And we tried to distill that into something that was reader-friendly by building off the branding exercise the city engaged in in 2015. So we had a lot of tools at our disposal and I used our city fonts and color scheme. And working with Tabitha, we worked on the goals and policies chapters to provide some consistency with visual hierarchy and layout described headings and subheadings and the presentation of our goals and policies. We've also incorporated visuals and photography from our city library into the document to provide some visual interest. And as you can see from this slide, we went from dense text to something that's easily skimmable, so you can get the gist of a document. I hope that it's more pleasant to read as well with kind of some of the visual organization that we've worked hard to achieve. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mona St. Clair to discuss our planning commission's recommendations.
Mona, you're muted. Okay, am I still muted?
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of file number P T A 20-0004. After careful review of what we were presented and noting that the, what was being proposed appeared to comply with all of the regulatory requirements, regional and local and state, we voted to approve it. So our recommendation is that city council approve the amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Clair. With that, staff present to council the option to adopt ordinance 1450-20, which would set these changes in motion. Staff, of course, have the full range of options before them and we are available to answer any and all questions and look forward to that discussion.
All right, thank you. So at this point, listen, we'll hear testimony from bills in the public who wish to testify in favor of the proposal. Anyone there Bates? All right, the order goes back and forth with that, all right, thank you. Anyone in the meeting, I don't see anybody has joined. Any members of the public who wish to testify in opposition to the ordinance? None, all right. Questions for staff? From the counselors? Paul?
Yeah, just a real quick question to anyone on staff. I think I already know the answers, I just want to confirm because I didn't see it in the summary. But this aligns with, and I believe it was House Bill 2000 that was passed two years ago, that, correct?
And what was the, what was the substance of that bill, Councilor Morrison?
That was the housing, the housing bill changing, you know, resident, all residential zoning to multifamily. Is any of this incorporated into that or is that, does that come down the road under a revised statute?
Those would be our next steps in the project. This essentially sets up the comprehensive plan to accept those, those changes in the future. And so by, you know, the slide that Tabitha showed, you know, where there's encouragement of different housing types in all residential zones, it sets that up, but then the development code changes, which will happen in 2021, would actually implement that.
Okay, I kind of, I remember seeing that, but I, because I remember there was going to be another discussion, but I didn't see it in here. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome.
Other questions for staff? Valerie?
I just want to comment that this is a beautifully done document and it's so easy to read. Such an improvement over what existed and I'm sure someone put a lot of time into this and it's just really appreciated. And I think, you know, anybody in our community that would pull this up could read it fairly easily and get the information they need. So thank you.
All right, so I'm not seeing other questions, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to council deliberations. Robert?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to follow on Councilor Pratt's comments. This has been a long process, and we're not fully completed with it, but I want to give special thanks to Steve and Tabitha and Erin for your continued work on this. It's an iterative process, and of course, the Planning Commission for its work as well. It's hard to overstate the significance of these changes and how they're going to affect development and redevelopment in the city of Tuolton for, for years to come. So your careful and diligent work on this is greatly appreciated. So and with that, Mr. Mayo, I will read or move for first reading of ordinance 1450-20.
I have a motion as second for first read by title only, a ordinance number 1450-20 and discussion on motion. All right, so I'll start the roll here. Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Well, I do have one quick question. It's such a beautiful document, shouldn't someone vote no so we can hear Sean read the whole thing? I vote yes.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1450-20, an ordinance relating to land use, establishing a separate comprehensive plan document, deleting Tuolton Development Code chapters 1 through 16, 20, and 30, amending the housing element of the comprehensive plan, and amending Tuolton Development Code chapters 33, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 50, 52, 54, 56, 58, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 73G, 74, Appendix A Maps, Appendix and Appendix B Figures, PTA 20-0004.
All right, glad that was you, not me.
Sean has a future in auctioneering.
Yeah, but he's never leaving the city, so that's not going to happen. But I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number 1450-20.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only of ordinance number 1450-20. A discussion on the motion. All right, Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. One more time, Sean.
Ordinance number 1450-20, an ordinance relating to land use, establishing a separate comprehensive plan document, deleting Tuolton Development Code chapters 1 through 16, 20, and 30, amending the housing element of the comprehensive plan, and amending Tuolton Development Code chapters 33, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 50, 52, 54, 56, 58, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 73G, 74, Appendix A Maps and Appendix B Figures, PTA 20-0004.
All right. Looking for a motion to adopt.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1450-20.
I have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number 1450-20. Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counsel Pratt? Can you hear you, Valerie?
Hi, sorry.
Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
President Grimes?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, so it's unanimous. The ordinance is passed. All right, moving on to items in general business, we have five items tonight in general business. First one being consideration of resolution number 5531-20, authorize the city manager to execute intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for small business emergency system grant funds. Is that Jonathan?
Good evening, Mayor.
Look at the look of Jonathan there with the background, a different shirt. You're not wearing the little vest that you usually wear.
Yeah, I'm technically not in my home, so.
Jonathan is technically on vacation, so we're not.
Well, this is me in the background, but I am on vacation, so. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight before you is a ordinance, excuse me, not an ordinance, there are a lot of ordinances tonight, but this is not one of them. It's a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County. This is a same IGA that the council approved back in August for the 680 that was distributed to the Small Business Assistance Program as well as the Childcare Scholarships. There is no intergovernmental agreement attached as the final agreement has not been uploaded yet, and the reason for that being is we got the final numbers for what we were allowed to expand of 441, 690 with the 10% administrative fee as of Friday afternoon. So that agreement will be uploaded this week. The 441, 690 is going to be deployed the same way as we have before to those businesses that have been affected by COVID-19. Earlier last, excuse me, late last week on Friday, I sent council an email detailing a brief synopsis of what we intended to do, and we'll can talk about that tonight if need be. Right now, staff has agreed that we will use the 441, 690 to target those businesses that have not received any funds from the city of Tuolton since March 2020. The reason being is we feel that we've done tremendous outreach to our small business community, but there have been drop offs along the way, and we want to ensure those that have not heard in whatever capacity that has prevented them from hearing about these programs have the opportunity to apply. The application is currently open. It is on tuoltonoregon.govbackslasheconomicdevelopment. This application runs through this Friday, December 21st. As such, the funding will technically be the same. It's two months worth of rent or 60 days worth of expenses up to $10,000 in home-based businesses up to 1,500. After these funds have been deployed to those businesses that have not received any funds whatsoever from the city of Tuolton, we intend to do what we initially did in July of dispersing the remaining amounts of the 441, 690 to all businesses that have received prior funds from the city of Tuolton. The reason staff recommends this approach is those businesses that we've helped since March 2020 are the same businesses that are currently struggling right now. So it would be prudent, I think, of the city of Tuolton to do this approach. We'll also prioritize those businesses that are currently affected by the two-week freeze and the current emergency status based on county. So indoor dining, who don't have the capacity for takeout delivery or outside dining, indoor recreation, and those small retails that have been limited in capacity. That is all I have for this portion of the agenda. Staff recommends approval, and we'll get the money as soon as the document has been sent.
Okay, questions for Jonathan? Bridget?
I just, I, I think that it's, I don't actually have a question. I just want to thank you for coming in on your vacation to give us this really important update, and I think it's really a great strategy to be efficient, to make sure that we're not missing anyone in our safety net, and then to efficiently address the needs of the businesses that we've identified before. So thank you so much for your thoughtfulness and your leadership throughout this whole COVID period, and I hope that you get a really good needed break and enjoy your holiday, even though you're here tonight with us. Thanks again.
Any other questions or comments for Jonathan? I just want to thank Jonathan, again, like Bridget was saying, on your efforts on this. You heard as well as I did, Jonathan, some calls how frustrated people were with the window of Business Oregon opening and shutting so fast, and at least folks now have an option to get funding. Those businesses in Tuolton here, who maybe didn't get any money from Business Oregon, now have an opportunity to get some money from this grant. And it's not a 15-minute window. They have some days to fill out the application, get it in, get any questions answered they might have from the Business Resource Center, that being Kathy Bazan. If people have questions, they can reach out to Kathy to get the application done. Sort of encourage folks who have not received any funding yet to get their application in. There is assistance that's free, just have to call the chamber, Tuolton Chamber, and they'll connect you with Kathy. And let's get some funds to you because we don't want to return these funds back to Washington DC. These $440,000 have to be distributed by the end of the month. So we're really eagerly wanting to give this money away to Tuolton businesses who are eligible. So please get the word out, those folks who are watching tonight, hopefully some of the media who was on before or are on now can get the word out that these funds are available to help our struggling small businesses. Maria?
And they don't have to be part of the chamber, right? Members of the chamber?
Right. You do not be a chamber member, it's free to all. All right, Bridget?
Can you just remind us again, it's tuoltonoregon.govbackslash?
Economic Development.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move for adoption of resolution 5531-20.
You gotta do first read, don't we? Since it's an ordinance?
It's a resolution.
The resolution? Oh, okay, I'm looking at item number two, you're right, correct, all right. So I have a motion to adopt resolution number 5531-20. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt resolution 5531-20 and discussions on that motion? All right, Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, it is unanimous. Thank you, Jonathan, and enjoy your time off.
I'm not going yet, Mayor.
No, yeah, you got a few more. Item number two, then you go after item number two?
I did, sir.
All right, let's go, go through this too. Consideration of ordinance number 144, 1446-20, repealing Tuolton Municipal Code 11-7 relating to Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council again. The ordinance before you is a repeal of an ordinance code 11-7 for the repeal of the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee or the URAK. This committee has long served its function for the Tuolton Urban Renewal Agency from its inception in 1991, and then again re-formatted in 2001. But part of this repealing and replacing eventually later tonight with the TDC resolution is just to clarify the legal boundaries of what is an applicable advisory committee. As such, council, you sit as the members and commissioners of the Tuolton Development Commission, and this just clears up the legal confusion of what an urban renewal advisory committee is in terms of the adoption by the city council versus an urban renewal advisory committee or task force or stakeholder task force as adopted by the Tuolton Development Commission. As you saw in your packet, we are not eliminating any stakeholder output, it's just clarifying the position of what this committee is, its function, as well as its legal authority by formation. And Sean, if you want to jump in, because you helped craft this one, just to clear up, and if you have any words to add to this.
I think you summarized it well. I don't have anything to add. If council has questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those.
Questions? All right, no questions. Let's get this man, well, do you have to stay around for the TDC meeting, Jonathan?
I do, but that's fine.
Oh, okay, well, then, okay, let's, we can move this along so he can go on vacation, but he's got to hang around anyway. Robert?
Yeah, I'll move for first reading of ordinance 1446-20 by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second for first read of ordinance number 1446-20, repealing Municipal Code 117, 11-7 relating to the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Any questions on the motion? A deliberation? Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1446-20, an ordinance repealing Tuolton Municipal Code 11-7 relating to the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
I make?
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only, a ordinance number 1446-20 and discussion on the motion. Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1446-20, an ordinance repealing Tuolton Municipal Code 11-7 relating to the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number 1446-20. Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt? Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, it's unanimous, all right. Okay, moving on to item number three, ordinance number 1447-20. This is a third reading for final adoption of this ordinance. As you recall, back on November 23rd, we had our first and second reading of this ordinance, but the vote for adoption was not unanimous, so it's required to have a third reading tonight before we consider it for adoption. Do you have any questions about this ordinance? Or a motion?
I motion that we have a third reading of ordinance number 1447-20 by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second for third reading of ordinance 1447-20. Any discussions on the motion?
I, I would like to have a little discussion on the motion if possible.
Okay.
Thank you. I would just like to point out, and other counselors may want to jump in too, that the fact that they're simply establishing a parks utility does not mean that we are tonight discussing or setting rates, or in my opinion, this would be used outside of a large funding. I see this as part of a larger funding mechanism, probably a bond or a levy that would go out for the parks system. So, you know, my intention in setting a parks utility tonight is simply to set it as an option, but not something that we would be going out for a fee anytime soon, and that it wouldn't be used as a standalone item. It would be used as part of, as I said, a larger funding solution for the many needs we have with the parks. I just wanted to say that, thanks.
Okay, sure. Any other discussion? All right, so Counselor Kellogg?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt? Got to go one more time, Valerie, couldn't hear you. Counsel Morrison?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
I'm sorry, are we, is this to adopt it or to read it or to third reading?
Third reading.
Okay, yes.
Right, Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1447-20, an ordinance establishing a parks utility and creating Tuolton Municipal Code Chapter 3-7.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1447-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1447-20, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, just really quick, I just, this is a perfect example of what I talked about earlier about, we all have the exact same goal, we all want the exact same thing, and we're just looking at a different way to go about it. And I just, I just think going down this road is a mistake. And I, and I, I've said this to a couple of people in some emails back and forth and in conversations. I really hope I'm wrong, and I hope, I hope someone can say, see, I told you that this was the way to go. But I just can't agree that this, this is the right way to start this process.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Counselor Kellogg.
No.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Yes.
Heard you. Counsel Morrison.
No.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
No.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so I, by my count, that's in four to three in favor of the ordinance. The ordinance is adopted. All right, so next item up is ordinance Number 1449-20. This is the same kind of situation we had on ordinance Number 1447-20. It had a first and second reading back on 11/23, but it was, there was a lack of votes for adoption, so now it's up for a third reading tonight.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I will move for third reading by title only of ordinance 1449-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a third reading by title only of ordinance Number 1449-20. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 1449-20, an ordinance relating to the initiative process and amending Twalton Municipal Code Chapter 1-24.
All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I will move for adoption of ordinance 1449-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance Number 1449-20. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Morrison.
No.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also, so that's a six to one vote in favor of ordinance 1449-20, so the ordinance is adopted. Item number five, consideration of ordinance Number 1452-20 relating to the tax on marijuana sales, amending municipal, Twalton Municipal Code Chapter 13-1, and creating new provisions. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Mayor, members, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Don Hudson, your Assistant City Manager. And before I get started tonight, I want to thank Counselor Morrison and Counselor Kellogg for all the wonderful work you've done on the Council. But I want to mention something that was not brought up much earlier tonight, is that both these gentlemen were part of my Budget Committee prior to coming on the Council. So I really appreciated their insight, their questions through that process, and then their four years on the Council. So, thank you both gentlemen for all you've brought to the organization through the Budget Committee and through the Council. And I just, we will miss those insights, but like everybody said earlier, I know you will be around, and I'm sure I will get phone calls or emails if you have other questions. So the, the real reason I'm here this evening is the ordinance that's in front of you. So back in 2016, the Twalton voters passed a 3% local marijuana tax. About that same time, the Council adopted ordinance 1396-16, which created Chapter 13.01, or zero, dash, zero, one of the Twalton Municipal Code related to the 3% local marijuana tax. In order for, if we were to get a dispensary in town, the best way to collect that tax would be to go into an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Revenue, so that when they collect the statewide tax, they would collect our local tax as well. In order to do that, we need to add a clause into our municipal code that would allow for the penalties and interest that is in state statute to match in our local ordinance, to match the state. So we're asking for those changes this evening, as well as the ability to sign an IGA with the Department of Revenue after any changes occur. That'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Don? All right.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion for consideration of ordinance Number 1452-20, reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for reading by title only of ordinance Number 1452-20. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Someone moved here. Counsel President Grimes. And I vote aye also.
And I do too.
That's who moved, Counsel Kellogg, sorry. I think we got everybody, Sean, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 1452-20, an ordinance relating to the tax on marijuana sales, amending Twalton Municipal Code Chapter 13-1, and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only for ordinance Number 1452-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading of ordinance Number 1452-20, any discussion? Counselor Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 1452-20, an ordinance relating to the tax on marijuana sales, amending Twalton Municipal Code Chapter 13-1, and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1452-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance Number 1452-20, any discussion? Counselor Kellogg. Oh, wait.
I have a question, actually, for discussion. Don, could you tell us, with this ordinance, is this part of the conversation around the new funding that goes towards treatment for addictions?
No, this is a whole separate tax, has nothing to do with the passage of the measure, statewide measure that related, that you're relating to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments or discussion? Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, I just want to make a clarifying point to, just kind of to put it out there that, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, this merely allows us to use another collection agency similar to what we do, for example, the hotel tax. In the event a marijuana dispensary is built in Twalton and starts, and has revenue, that then that revenue, the sales tax, which the 3% sales tax, is then collected by another agency on our behalf, as sheriffs, to spare us, is, okay. I, I was pretty sure that was the answer, I just wanted to make sure everybody out there and TVA understood what we were voting on, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Right, Counsel Kellogg.
Aye.
Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also, so ordinance 1452-20 passes unanimously. And that's the end of general business, moving on to items removed from consent agenda, we had none. Council Communications, due to a limited amount of time during work session, we didn't do our usual Council Roundtable slash Communications. So we'll do that now, and we'll start off with the short timers here, Counselor Kellogg first.
Thank you, Mayor, I get to steal thunder from a number of people, I'm sure who are going to mention this, but really have to give incredible kudos to staff and whoever came up with the idea for the Christmas car lights parade. There are a few things I have seen occur in our community that have gotten such widespread adoration. I mean, just multiple posts on Nextdoor, on Facebook, wondering who organized this, and, you know, really just timely, given that we're all, you know, isolated and apart to have, you know, a community event that stirs so much interest and thankfulness, especially in this, this difficult season. So, again, whoever came up with that idea and whoever implemented it, thank you so much, it's, it's, it's a really great deed.
Can I put a plug in? So it was the park staff, but it was through a grant from Washington County on the CARES funding. But there's one more this weekend, so if you check the website, it's in the Jergens Park area, and for, I, I think we're up to our limit in terms of the number of registrants, but anybody in town can go and, along the parade route and watch. And I totally agree with you, it was an awesome event.
I wanna, I'm gonna pick on two people. I wanted to specifically mention Julie Ludeman and Heidi Marks. They did a lot of work on this, and I just, the amount of work they put on IBOC, I know they did with Alpha Lottie also, but there was quite a lot of cars on Saturday night, and they were stupendous. I'm not taking any credit for the mayor's pickup truck, that was not me who decorated that, that was Heidi and Julie. So, they get the kudos for that, but looking forward to this Saturday. As Robert mentions, my Facebook page, this is like the biggest topic on the Facebook page in the two years I've been in mayor, and people loved it. And I just can't believe how folks were camped out on their sidewalks with fire pits and heaters, and it was a lot of fun, and looking forward to Saturday. Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, I second that notion from Counselor Kellogg, it was up in our neighborhood Saturday night, and you can hear the sirens, and it was, it's really, and it, you know, originally I thought, well, this is kind of a nice substitute for our Christmas on the commons. I really missed this year, we've been going every year. My kids inquire, that's always a feature, they sing there. And now I realize that we've, we've added to something that next year, when it's all safe to congregate, that we'll hopefully be able to have both, because it is really a wonderful event. And I have, I have nothing else other than to say, thank you, everyone. What I already said before stands, I will miss everybody and hope to stay in touch with everybody, and everyone have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And with the vaccine out, I hope we can all have a very, very Happy New Year.
All right, so Counsel Pratt.
Yeah, I wanted to say that YouTube video that I think Heidi made with music to the Christmas lights was really awesome too. But I attended several meetings, but I just wanted to speak to the two last week in the League of Cities for newly electeds, and then I did one through Portland State. And what I really got out of that, other than a lot of technical stuff, was that we really are fortunate to have the staff we do, because some people, I don't think they knew who their city manager was, or they didn't know they could. It was really amazing to me that what, you know, how privileged we are and how effective we can be by having those resources. And the second thing was, these were all mostly city counselors, mayors, and I think there were a couple county commissioners, but that every, the overwhelming majority of people they polled, and everybody was there because they wanted to serve their community or better their community. And it's just a nice thing to know that the motivations of people are really good behind doing the service and getting that, you know, great discount off the utility bill. But anyway, that's all I have to say, and have a happy holiday, and I'm looking forward to 2021.
Counsel Brooks.
Um, I have, I have a little bit more. First, I just want to say that, again, it's really been a pleasure serving with you both, Paul and Robert. And I did, for the moment of silence, I did prepare a little bit. That this week, you know, we reached over 3,000 deaths, or 300,000 deaths and 3,000 deaths in one day. And that, along with sort of the holiday experience that we're talking about, the idea that we have vaccines available, and that this morning, Meridian Park received at 7:00 AM, 901 of the dispersments of 975 doses right here in Twalton for our healthcare workers. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And because these numbers get so large, I was at a memorial, it's very interesting, online to have these opportunities in a time of COVID when you've lost someone. And there was, in the Hanukkah season, I thought was appropriate, there's a poem by a poet named Zelda. If you could just honor me with a minute called "Each of Us Has a Name," it's fairly short. But I think sometimes we get lost in the numbers, and so I just want to say, each of us has a name given by the source of life and given by our parents. Each of us has a name given by our stature and our smile, and given by what we wear. Each of us has a name given by the mountains and given by our walls. Each of us has a name given by the stars and given by our neighbors. Each of us has a name given by our sins and given by our longings. Each of us has a name given by our enemies and given by our love. Each of us has a name given by our celebrations and given by our work. Each of us has a name and given by the seasons and given by our blindness. Each of us has a name given by the sea and given by death. And I just wanted to, it just really meant something to me. I also wanted to thank Judy Ludeman and for the work on the parade. I anticipated attending myself, but I had an emergency with my dog, actually. And the psyche grant that that came through also helped support letters from wintertime characters, which I participated in, and was a really meaningful experience, writing letters to kids from wintertime characters through the library. And I want to thank Margaret Gunther as well for working on that. And then the Donuts in the Park I mentioned earlier, and I will say, just because our parks conversation's been happening, that I was fortunate to run into Ross Hoover, Parks Director, while I was there, and Julie, and they showed me the improvements at Alpha Lottie Park. And I remember the day that they were going through and asking for feedback from all the kids, and they had bilingual park staff there, asking questions. And to see the new parks equipment over at Alpha Lottie Park was really quite great. And also the new, that it's like a floor soccer game that is very culturally competent of our Parks Department. And I don't know the specific name of the game, but it was being utilized. And, and, you know, I'd also walked through Jergens earlier and saw what an impressive park that was, I haven't spent a lot of time there, and also experienced Stone Ridge. So to just note that there's a lot of disparities between our parks and that some people might not know how different parks are different in our community. And, and so that was really informative to me. I also wanted to say that we appointed, reappointed people to the core parking lot through the CCAC, and in that I attended both the community listening session and the Twalton Tigerhead School SRO discussion, as we all did. And anyway, I just think there's a lot of work on that, that was identified. And I'm looking forward to seeing some improvements. And then for, I did attend the council training too, since I couldn't go. I was out of town the first year, so it was really informative. And then community or the LIP and PAB. So for PAB, the, just so you guys know, the CDBG application rating, we did the criteria review and the home application review sheet. So both of these are funding mechanisms through the county where we grant money for help with investments and affordable housing and also services that affect people that are in need right now. And we, there was quite a lot of accomplishments from last year that were highlighted. And just like one percentage would be, the household served, 30.7% were extremely low income, 23.1% were low income and 46.2% were moderate income. And that was through land trust models, housing rehabilitation programs, public facility improvements and fair, fair housing. And one of the highlighted projects is in the city of Tuolton, the Sagard Street pedestrian connectivity that was completed in June 2020. So just, and there's things on the agenda. We will be meeting to review applicants for both of these grants coming up in January. And we went over the new criteria and approved that at this meeting. And, you know, Basal Creek's, one of those conversations on there. That meeting is, the staff evaluations are completed and distributed on the 14th of January and the sponsor presentations are on the 28th of January. And those are public meetings. So if anybody's interested in understanding more about these programs and that help people in our county and our community, please let me know. And then the other piece was around LIP. And that has been quite a process. We're just about ready to wrap that up. But we went over a draft of racial equity strategies, which is a main talking point for impacting because there's such disparity in, in housing opportunities based on race that's been identified through actual, you know, assessments and facts. So the housing intervention priorities are supportive housing, shelter and transitional housing, long-term rent assistance and eviction prevention. And being culturally specific and removing barriers is just a main aim. So I decided to update you guys on that. That's very brief, but if you ever have any more questions, I'm very happy to answer them. And like I said, I think they added one or two more meetings just in the beginning of January. We were supposed to be ended, but we felt that the, the planning process was too important to rush through and it's already on a sort of truncated timeline to meet the metro requirements. So that's going to go back to metro and we will have something that's collaborative with the rest of the region, but also is specific and designed to Washington County, which I'm really proud of the work and all the time and effort that so many people have put into that and be part of the process was really, you know, with some work, but it was a really important conversation and I feel privileged to be a part of it. Thanks. And happy holidays to everybody.
All right. Thank you. Maria.
Yeah, well, I haven't had a lot of meetings, but I did attend the MAC meeting for, it was a very quick, like 20-minute meeting, but it was for just adoptive, the, the, just the, the finances. It was just all about their budget. So that's, it was really quick. That was last week. And then I also, we had our core parking, we had our, one of our committee, city committee meetings on the, on the fourth, I want to say, can't remember, or the seventh, I can't remember the day, sorry. But it was, it's always the first Monday of the month. And we met with some great people in our, in our community. And I just want to say, we have a lot of good people and that volunteer. And I mean, I'm someone that's been volunteering for 30 years. That's amazing to me. And I'm always impressed by all the people that sign up and volunteer for these kinds of committees. Other than that, I really don't have much other than to say, please shop local. And I, I mean, we have a lot of, everything we need is practically here in Tuolton. And I think that from food, from, you know, clothing, retail, all kinds of stuff that we have in Tuolton. And I want to encourage everyone to continue supporting our businesses here that are suffering. And, you know, they, we, it's kind of like, let's visit them as we would if they would be open, like the restaurants. And just, I mean, I tried a lot of the takeout and I've enjoyed that. I get to talk more with the, you know, the business owner and ask him questions. So I encourage you to do that as well in the community that's out there hearing me. Thank you. Happy holidays. Happy New Year, since we're not going to see each other until 2021. So be safe. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Can I pop in one more time? I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Thanks. Speaking of the Psyche Grant, that we're going to be meeting tomorrow with the Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee. But one of the things that we're talking about is the, another piece of the Psyche Grant, which is the grant that did the Holiday Lights Parade and it's called the Resiliency Mural, the Resiliency Project Tuolton Mural Application. And we're going through applicants for the Community Psyche Grant Resiliency Project in Tuolton. And this will be a mural that has themes of unity, hope, resilience, kindness, strength and connection. And proposals should incorporate those themes. And there'll be a proposal review that the Arts Committee is doing. And eventually this will be on community park, on a wall, on the, on the community parks, the building, I don't know exactly what to call that building, but there's a building there. So it'll be on the side of that. And just so you know, and so that any artists out there, anybody that wants to refer an artist, the proposals are due January 11th. Artists are notified January 18th. And we'll be starting planning on this mural on the first of February. So please go to our website and apply to do that if you're an artist in the community. And please share that information with any of your friends in the arts community. Thanks for letting me pop back in.
Counselor Rosengrimes.
Thank you. Yeah, I attended the SRO meeting, I think most of us did, on November 30th. I found it to be a very interesting and eye-opening and educational evening. I was happy to hear so many diverse and interesting inputs from both community members and students at the, the junior high and the high school. I, I just really appreciated the honesty and the individual outlooks that people brought to the table. It was extremely educational and, as I said, very eye-opening for me. And I, I look forward to following that process as it moves forward. And I love how much of the community is involved and is talking and is, you know, committed to a good outcome and an outcome that honors all the people and having everybody at the table for the discussion. I really appreciated that. And then I just wanted to say again, Robert and Paul, I will miss working with you guys, but I know you'll be there in the community volunteering. And I know that if we have questions in your areas of expertise, if we give you guys a call, I know that you'll help us and reacquaint us with all the projects that you've represented us on. And I just wish everyone happy holidays, safe and happy time with family. And I just appreciate you all so much and I'm looking forward to the new year in 2021. And I hope you guys all have a wonderful holiday and a wonderful new year.
Thanks, Nancy. We gotta hold it. Remember, we've got a, a Development Commission meeting after this, so we gotta get it back together for that, Nancy. So quite a busy couple of weeks, as was mentioned before. Attended the joint meeting of TTSD, Tigerhead and Tuolton City Councils. Looking forward to see what the product is on the revised SRO program. Attended the League of Oregon Cities call back on December 3rd, when the governor was announcing the changes to the COVID restrictions and extending some of the COVID restrictions for the holidays. It was an hour and a half call. It was jam-packed with people, lots of questions and especially from businesses that were going to be, you know, the continued closure. You know, those businesses such as gyms and bowling alleys, not being able to open throughout the rest of the holidays. Whereas some businesses had a little bit of release, relief, some did not. And so there were a lot of questions about that and asking if that's something can be re-looked at. We haven't heard anything since. Want to give a shout out to Megan for helping me on developing a plan on January 6th. I'm presenting the year that was to the Tuolton Rotary. And Megan's helping me put a presentation together to wrap it up, everything that happened in Tuolton in 2020 in about 10 minutes. So we're going to do rapid-fire PowerPoint presentation. I'm envisioning lots of questions of what happened over the year. On the 9th, I had a great conversation with Mayor Lex Joe Buck of Lake Oswego to see where he lines up on issues in the region. It went very well. And just want to give a plug for his restaurants. He's one of the local restaurants in the area. In addition, Tuolton supports other restaurants. He is the proprietor of Babica Hen and Goo Banks and they've got outdoor dining and he's trying to make it work. So if you want to try Goo Banks or Babica Hen or Lola's is his new place, go ahead and do that. In addition to the wonderful restaurants here in Tuolton. Later that day, I had the Metro Mayor's Consortium meeting where we focused on the governor's, her budget that she suggests to the legislature. It's kind of like the president's budget. The governor can present a budget, but the legislature can say, that's nice, but we're doing this. And that's what I'm going to think they're going to do with the budget. It's going to be a tough time. We know for certain it's going to be a 2021 session because it has to be for the budget. But there's a lot of rumor that it might be a quick session here before the end of the year to deal with some COVID and fire-related items. But since they can't meet in person, there's all this legal gobbledygook that Sean and Robert would love about having to call an emergency session and the rules for that. So they're trying to work that out. We'll see what happens with that. A big chunk of the discussion was Representative Bynum is going to present a bill on unlawful, which unlawful meetings, riots and protests. And I emailed all of you with the proposed bill. She wanted feedback on some of the restrictions. She's envisioning being put on police use of force and just wanted our thoughts on it. We gave her some suggestions and she's open to any comments. So if you've had a chance or haven't had a chance yet, take a look at her bill and shoot her an email or give her a call. She's more than willing to listen to all sides because she will be introducing this in the legislative session. Later that afternoon, we had the Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium, where GPI gave a business development update, basically their efforts in 2020 to attract businesses to the area. They were fairly successful in attracting some big firms to the area. But once the protests start and all what we saw played out in Portland, they are now playing catch-up. They have to rebuild the area's reputation and attract businesses back to downtown Portland so that we can start attracting some significant employers and businesses back to the region. One side effect of the protests and the situation that to see a Portland is in, is that more businesses are now looking in the suburbs and they're looking to site there. So Tiger, Tuolton and Wilsonville are being actively looked at as sites for future business development rather than downtown Portland, which is great for us. We'll, we'll definitely take it. But we do want to, you know, have the region back to where it was pre-COVID and the solid reputation that we had for being a business-friendly community. Had a very interesting, I don't know if anyone else joined, that the National League of Cities had a meeting about vaccine distribution and the challenges of vaccine distribution. And a major subject there was the reluctance of BIPOC folks to even have the shot. There's some significant reluctance on, in the black community to have the shot. About 50% of the folks in polling said they're not going to get the shot. They don't care because of the history of racism in the United States and in certain areas of the country. And our Hispanic community is very fearful of taking it because of perceived INS folks maybe hanging around the facility when they're getting the shots. So NLC is putting together an education program to help cities encourage their residents to get the shot. And one of the things they're encouraging right off the bat is, if you get your shot very, you know, pretty here soon, any of us, be it mayors or staff or counselors, have photos taken of it. So you can show that it is safe and effective and build trust. And that's one of the biggest things is building a trust campaign from the cities on up that to encourage folks to get the immunization once it is in your area. On the 11th, I had the Washington County Mayor's Lunch and two presenters. One was Carlos Queznell, who is the new Council of Mexico. He started a new job. Hopefully you all know there is a councilit in downtown Portland and that's a councilit for all of Oregon and Southwest Washington. He started a few weeks ago and he's basically the head of the councilit. And so he's getting the word out that he is in town and actively working with the Washington County mayors to serve the Hispanic community in Washington County. Was not aware that the COVID is having a tremendous impact on his councilit because due to the restrictions, they can only see so many people a day to do paperwork and such relating to getting anything for a driver's license in Oregon or issues with folks, you know, their relatives in Mexico that there are some very dissatisfied Mexican residents or residents, citizens, I should say, with the council because they just cannot keep up with the demand of folks in the councilit. Counselor Reyes.
Yeah, I just want to correct. It's for the Mexican citizens. You said Hispanic community? So yeah, not for the Hispanic. It's just for the Mexican citizens.
Well, one thing they're talking about is they're going to help anyone.
Right. What I'm saying, if they need any paperwork or anything to do with it's, you know, each country has its own consulate.
Correct. Correct. But he's, he's thinking in general that he'll, one of the things that we try to talk, we talked to him about and that he's taken advisement is maybe a mobile councilit kind of vehicle or, you know, outreach in each city that they can, you know, reach out to each, the communities in all our cities. So he just started and he's looking forward to working with us. The second part of the presentation that today, that day was Family Promise. Family Promise of Tuolton Valley, which is Rose Money, we all know her. And Lois from Tuolton, Family Promise of Beaverton presented on what Family Promise does and their mission. And there's an idea brewing that there are three, three, four, four family promises in Washington County. They're thinking about consolidating their administrative offices so that they can save money and basically have one set of administration, one set of caseworkers, but still have distributed housing. So they presented that at the end. That was seen very positive as long as the housing wasn't consolidated. Makes sense to, you know, save money and just have one headquarters location, if you will. Still have that staff and caring. Location, if you will, still have that staff and caring um. The folks who provide case uh work. Uh, so we're gonna see what happens with that. Uh, and then finally. Today was the Washington County Corning Meeting. Uh, a plus for us is um the committee voted to uh support. The Half Mile Trail Dollars. Uh, we're looking to extend the Twalton River Trail under nine nine W. And so the funding, M-stip funding was approved for that trail, but the problem is it's uh one of many. Projects being presented to ODOT under the Common Path Program. Uh, so Washington County is offering to. Uh, do matching funds for all these projects. Uh, but now that goes to ODOT and ODOT decides on what projects will be funded. Throughout the state. It's very competitive. So keep your fingers crossed that our project is selected. Uh, and then they had a presentation on HB two thousand and three, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Uh, it was a requirement that the Department of Land Use and Conservation uh present this analysis to the legislate to the legislature. Basically, they just present their plan and ideas on how cities can better um. Do land use planning and housing analysis in the next twenty years. Um, we'll see what happens. It was only a draft, so I'm waiting for the final uh document. There was lots of questions about. You know, how does how do cities, you know, attract affordable housing and make it possible to put projects together? To meet the needs of affordable housing because it's uh painfully obvious. Look at their numbers that it is in dire need in throughout the state. Um, one thing I wanna do in addition, we've all said, you know, goodbye to Robert. And Paul, but also wanna mention there are some mayors who are leaving, some long term mayors who are leaving in the region. I just wanna uh give them my thanks. One is Denny Doyle of Beaverton. Uh, Denny Doyle. Uh, it's a wealth of experience. He taught me a lot while being mayor. And it's just amazing to watch him when we went back in the day when you used to go to Washington DC. And lobby Congress. He is a master of organizing that and working with uh our congresspeople and senators. And just how to do it right. How to lobby the right way. It is an art. And he has it down and he taught me a tremendous amount of some. Skill, if you will. He gave me a lot of pointers on how to do that in DC. Also wanna give a shout out to Mayor Knapp of Wilsonville. Uh, he uh was subject to term limits. Uh, he was a child's advocate, as we all know, for Wilsonville. We all knew what Wilsonville wanted because Tim was willing to tell you at every meeting. Uh, so that's one thing you gotta give him credit about and he was fanatical about transportation in this region. Uh, in this area of, you know, Washington County slash Clackamas County because his city is a lot like ours. And being in two counties and he was a master of transportation. He knew it and was tirelessly always advocating for this area of the county. I also wanna uh thank uh Mayor Axelrod um of West Lynn. Uh, as we all know, West Lynn uh had their moments over the last year or two. And uh, he was always uh graceful and a gentleman when asked about what was going on in his city. But he was also a huge advocate for the locks being reopened on on the Willamette. And he is still going to continue on with the redevelopment of Willamette Falls. Um, so I wanna say goodbye to Russ. Russ has uh taught me a lot of things also. And finally, our neighbor here, uh Ken Studbaker, Lake Oswego. Uh, Mr. Studbaker uh is uh stepping down. I think he was also subject to term limits. Um, he also parted lots of information and knowledge on me because all these mayors worked with Lou hand in glove. It was tough to take, you know, fill in Lou's uh shoes after twenty years was tough, but they all were very welcoming and helpful to me. So I just wanna give my uh. Uh, thanks to all four gentlemen. Uh, and to wrap this up, again, COVID with the holidays. I know you wanna be with your family. You wanna have big like big get togethers, but please uh please abide by the governor's restrictions on. No more than, you know, hopefully six people, no more than two households. You know, save the celebrations to the spring and summer where we can have one big freaking party and be together. And be immunized and not have to worry about uh someone getting sick and dying. So with that, I think that is it. Uh, anything else for the good of the orb tonight so we can transition to the next meeting? Council Morrison.
Yeah, real, real quick point. You did not elaborate on the email you sent out. I think it was this morning on the um. And maybe Sean, can you comment? Is the fight between uh Bridgeport uh Cal Center Properties and and Regal Theaters. Is that just two kids with a squirt gun or is there something else going on? And my concern is. That if they're doing that to Regal, what on earth is going on with these poor, smaller businesses that don't have those kind of resources? And don't have that kind of public uh publicity uh to gen- being generated. And Frank, do you have any other insights on on the letter?
Um, we sent the letter out this morning and uh Mr. Brunin has gotten ahold of Sherilyn and myself. And wants to discuss it. Uh, of course, Senator Cal um. Wants to, I guess, I'm gonna say basically state their side of it. Um, they are saying that the article in the Oregonian didn't represent truly what is going on. So I know Sherilyn talked to him a little bit today. I have it on my to do's to uh talk to Mr. Brunin this week. But I think Sean, uh, I conclude Sean's legal update on the uh items in court. I don't know if you wanna mention anything on. What was going on in court over the with the Regal and Senator Cal dispute.
I mean, I I don't know a whole lot. Um, I can just say that, yeah, they're in a legal dispute over the payment of rent and whether or not uh. Uh, that payment is due and and whatever may come from that, including evictions.
So I'm gonna probably, we'll hold off. I'll follow back up with you, Paul, after my discussion with Fred. And let you know what's going on, but well, he I just wanna, I mean, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but. They have a differing opinion of what we've read in the Oregonian and they'd like their uh few minutes to discuss it with us. And um, you know, I'll talk to him and if uh I'm gonna open, and the letter said it too, if he wants to come to Twalton City Council. Maybe here at the beginning of the year and address it, he can, but um I'll talk to him and I'll pass on any notes that I get from him. Or any comments to all of you, even if you're not counselors anymore, but I assume I'll be talking to him this week. So you'll still be counselors by then and. You'll get an email from me.
Thank you.
Sure. I guess that's it for tonight on the city council meeting. So we'll go ahead and close the Twalton City Council meeting of.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, can I move to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, come on.
I'll second.
So I know Council Kellogg uh moved and Council Morrison seconded. Also in favor to conclude this meeting, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, now we have the December fourteenth Twalton Development Commission meeting. I'll go ahead and call that in a session. Uh, first item on the agenda in public comment. In public comment, uh, folks from the community have three minutes to discuss something that is not on the commission's agenda tonight. Living into three minutes. Bates, has anyone shown up in the pole center when we last spoke with you? Bates is muted.
Maybe Bates is left too.
Yeah.
He might have dozed off.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna assume if if someone was there, Bates would be awake or be there. So uh I'll assume there's no public comment. Uh, moving on to a consent consent agenda, the consent agenda tonight considers is comprised of one item. Consideration of approval of Twalton Development Commission Meeting Minutes of July twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Uh, this will be enacted with one vote. Would anybody like this item taken out the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved?
Second.
A motion is second to approve the consent agenda as read tonight. Council Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Moving on to general business, one item of general business tonight. Consideration of Resolution Number six two two dash twenty. Establishing an Urban Renewal Task Force for the Bassell Creek and Southwest Concept Areas District One. And ending the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Nice to see you again, Jonathan.
Good afternoon, Chairman, uh Commissioners. Tonight, the uh resolution before you is a consideration of establishing an urban renewal task force. For the Bassell Creek and Southwest Concept Areas and then by doing so, eliminating the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Staff tonight recommends approval uh of Resolution six twenty two dash twenty. I just a brief recap of where we had been. Uh, last council meeting, um, you expressed interest in the proposed outline. Of having a stakeholder task force dedicated to help providing public input. Uh, during the feasibility study. Council expressed great interest in having a robust public involvement process and we are just taking the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. And transitioning that function into a task force for this specific area. This does not preclude uh the commission of establishing another commission for the eventual district two. Or having a long term urban renewal advisory committee for the commission. However, this is just for this area. Um, in your staff report, you will see the proposed task force as follow. That is based on the eleven twenty three uh proposal that staff presented at the last council meeting. And just a brief recap of what that is. And this is exactly how the Urbanian Advisory Committee was structured. Uh, a task force of at least seven members, four from the area who are property owners. One member shall be of the Twalton Planning Commission. Uh, one member shall be a member of the Twalton City Council. And then one shall be an interested overlapping tax district. And the question that was proposed last time is who would you advise being the representative from the tax district? And I would say the one that would be needed the most convincing. Um, the term. For this task force right now is August first, twenty twenty one and or unless extended or terminated sooner by the commission. At least three many meetings will be held for District One and then a quorum of four. The duties of the task force real quick are review the proposed urban renewal plan boundary and make recommendations for the size and location of District One. Identify and recommend projects in the proposed area and then review financial analysis and impacts. Um, your outcome of this decision will be that the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee will be eliminated. And its place, this stakeholder task force will be placed upon it. Uh, moving forward, if the commission approves of this resolution, I will work with Sherilyn and Dawn and we will begin solicitations. Through the normal process of our volunteerism through the volunteer uh division with Jackie. Uh, we learned that from the Twalton twenty forty process. And that is it.
Questions for Jonathan. Valerie.
Um, how will you recruit a person from a overlapping taxing district?
Uh, so I would say that I would place that in the purview of Sherilyn and the commission on who to best to identify. Uh, uh, those representatives and talk with your counterparts.
Oh, we'll contact the the taxing entities and and talk with them. I, I mean, the the strongest candidates are. Uh, the fire district certainly and Washington County and the school district. Um, so we'll talk amongst ourselves. I would, I would think the strongest candidate would be the fire district and so asking them who would be appropriate.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Other questions for Jonathan? Uh, not a resolution, so you can go on vacation. Have a motion?
A motion that we adopt Resolution, Resolution Number six two two dash twenty.
Second.
A motion is second to approve Resolution six two two dash twenty. Any questions on the motion? Council Kellogg, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kellogg.
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrison.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes, I forget the President part, Commissioner Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So Resolution six two two dash twenty passes unanimously. Thank you, Jonathan. And now you can go home, go away and have fun.
Thank you. And to all and to Commissioners, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you too. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn our commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody.
Bye bye.